Thank you, everybody. It is 10:00 AM. It is 10:00 AM. We're going to call our meeting to order. Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. At this time, we will accept public comment for items not on the agenda.
I just want to recognize that this is the 80th anniversary of the bombing of Pearl Harbor in 1941, where 2,403 Americans were killed that day and began probably the greatest conflict in American history that literally changed the face of the earth. So I would like to recognize the sacrifices of so many people then and also the folks that serve in our military now to keep us protected and free.
Why don't we take maybe a moment of silence just to reflect on that? Why don't we do that? Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
A that will live in infamy.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. Seeing no one else for public comment, we will accept public comment for items that are on the agenda while they are under consideration. We'll look now for any additions needed to our agenda. Any additions? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we will move into our meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Commissioners' work sessions and meeting.
Then seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are approved. Okay. So with Proclamation 36 of 2021, we are very excited to have Sally Hauser. I believe I saw Sally come in. There she is. There we go. Okay. Sorry, Sally. And so we'd love to turn it over to you. It's an exciting four decades of Belfont, Victorian Christmas. Please, if you wanted to join us either at the table or at the podium, whatever you're most comfortable with, but we'd love to hear everything that's going on as we head into this Christmas Eve.
Okay. Well, it's been a difficult year again. I'm going to have to take these off because I can't see it. But we've managed to pull everything together and we have some of the old and some of the new together. And we are actually having a special opening ceremony on Thursday evening. And what we're doing that night is I've put a plea out for people to come who have ever been on a committee or who have ever served as a chairman of the event. Because there's still people around that, even though it's 40 years since it started, there's still people around that were involved and did things even years ago. So we want to kind of just thank everybody for the work that they've done over the years to bring it to where it is today. And the whole town has come together. It's been really wonderful. We did lose some of our venues because the public buildings are closed, but we had churches step up and other venues step up that we were able to have most of the things that we normally have plus a few others from old times. One of the things that we are going to do is they did a video about five years, I think five or six years after the event started. And it has a lot of historical value because it has people in there that are no longer with us, but they were valuable in promoting the history here. And so we're going to show that at the Heritage Center, the Richard Knupf Heritage Center, and have people come and view it there on and off throughout the day. That's one of the things that we're going to do. The other thing that we're going to do is when the very first year that they had the event, the way they made their money was they sold stock in Victorian Christmas. So we are going to sell stock. It can be a little more expensive than it was then. It was only $5 to buy a stock in Victorian Christmas. They made enough money to get it started. They made $1,000. And that first one cost them about $1,000. The whole town came out. I can remember taking my children to the event. And it was wonderful. The shopkeepers dressed. It was just amazing what they did. And that's kind of fallen by the wayside. We still have people that do dress, but not everybody wants to do that anymore, so that's okay. But we figured we'd do that in honor of the first group that actually started that. We figured we'd just sell the stock. It's going to be $20 this year. Inflation's hit, you know? So we decided that would be another way that we could help pay for some of the things that we have. And that's... But it's going to be normal. It's going to be, we're going to have the concerts and so on. One of the other things that we're doing is last year, because we couldn't have the event, we had a giving day, was very successful. The Girl Scouts gathered pajamas for the Center County foster children. And we gathered food for the food bank and monetary donations. We're going to do the pajamas this year because the Girl Scouts are actually doing the children's tea this year, which is really nice. But we are going to gather food and monetary donations for the food bank because they feed a lot of people, a lot of people. So that's where we are. But I think it's going to be wonderful. Like I said, it's been hard. One of the things that we are in charge of is decorating the town. And I want to publicly thank everybody that came out to help us. We put a plea out because we usually use the inmates at the center, at the residential facility. And this year, we couldn't do that because they've shut down because they didn't want COVID. They had so much COVID, they didn't want to let people in and out. So anyway, and that was fine. So I put a plea out. It was on TV, everything else. We had 35 people show up. And they weren't just from Belfont. They were from other towns around Center County. We even had a Boy Scout troop come from Old Seola Mills. And so it was wonderful. It was just wonderful to see and we had a good time. And everybody had fun and the town looks beautiful. They did a wonderful job, absolutely wonderful job. So, you know, things like that make me feel happy that the event's going to be able to go on. One of the things I will tell you, and I know I've said this before, but this woman is 74 years old. And I have some other projects that I really want to get off the ground, and the Heritage Center is one of them. That's my baby, and we have not been able to do what I've wanted to do. So I want to focus on that. And so this will be my last year. I will not be involved. I think I'm going to step back and let other people take over and do whatever they can. I'm really proud of my committee. My committee's stuck with me the whole time. I did lose a few this year because we all get worn out. We all get burnt out. And so anyway, what I want to say is thanks to everyone who has helped me throughout the years because we have taken this event from the bottom of the barrel to being on the top 10 list of holiday events to attend in Pennsylvania. And that makes me so proud. And I didn't do it myself. Everybody that's involved did it. And the commissioners were a big part of that. And I'm really grateful for that. And I hope that can continue because it brings a lot of people to town, really, a lot of people. We do have a bus coming tomorrow, 40 people. So, and I think they're staying overnight, too. So anyway, if anybody has any questions, I'll answer them. But that's where we are.
Thank you for your service, Sally.
You're welcome. I really love the event. I've always loved the event. And I love the town, you know? I love the county. I think we're a great place to raise a family. And so, and it's wonderful. What I'm seeing is it's wonderful to see the young people coming up that are doing wonderful things.
Where's the opening ceremony and the kickoff of?
The opening ceremony will be on the courthouse lawn, like it always had been in the past. We won't have the concerts that night because we can't, because the schools are closed, they don't want the children to come and do their concerts, which we will miss because that's one of the things we absolutely love. But we have the Nittany Nights on Friday night. We'll have the Nittany Nights and the Belfont Community Choir that will sing at the First Presbyterian Church. And then that'll start at 6:30. We'll have one concert at 6:30 and one at 7:30. And of course, the Dickens Troop is coming. And we were able to get enough funds to get 10 of them this year instead of the five and six that we've had these past few years. So they'll be all over, which will be wonderful.
Sure. So Sally, if you could, in a minute, turn to the camera and talk about how Belfont, Victorian Christmas, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, I think Belfont Under the Lights is Saturday afternoon and evening down in the park. And I believe the Curtain Mansion is also hosting something on Sunday afternoon?
Yes, they are. I just got that yesterday. I didn't realize they were doing that. We'll have the normal, well, the opening will be on Thursday evening and then we'll have the normal concerts on Friday evening. During the day, we'll also have concerts, too. DBI is doing the Under the Lights on the waterfront. They're having a winter market. One of the other things that we did, we coupled with the Gamble Mill and the Dickens Troop. We'll have storytellers over there. People can go in out of the cold and just visit. The storytellers are going to tell stories in the afternoon. There is going to be, like you said, the curtain thing on Sunday. Sunday, we have some concerts and we have the, as long as the weather permits, we'll have the carriage rides. There's not a lot that goes on on Sunday. Most of it goes on Saturday. We will have the Arts and Crafts Fair, or the Arts and Crafts part of it. And it will only be at the YMCA and there will be some vendors outside. We just couldn't, we didn't feel comfortable with, there were a couple venues we looked at, but we didn't feel comfortable enough because we couldn't spread people out. And that's what we wanted to do. And we did have some vendors that wanted to be outside, so we will have some vendors outside. And there's so much that goes on. And I brought brochures for everybody. The library is having something, both libraries, the Center County Library, the art museum. Everybody in town does something for that day. And so we're really tickled that the town came out to do what they're doing. It's not just us, it's everybody. We all work together.
So Sally, thank you so much for all the hard work that you've done to be a part of creating and kicking off the Christmas spirit here in Center County and especially in Belfont is really something special. And so you've really warmed the hearts of many people, many generations. And so really, a big kudos to you. I think we're all excited to join everybody on the courthouse steps on Thursday. So we hope the whole town comes out and, like you said, surrounding towns as well. But again, we want to approve this proclamation so we have it for you and just to recognize all the amazing things that are happening this holiday season in Belfont. So again, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Sally before we approve our proclamation? Okay, all right. We look for a motion then.
Motion to adopt Proclamation Number 36 of 2021, proclaiming the 40th anniversary of Belfont, Victorian Christmas.
Proudly seconded.
Then seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Love to present the proclamation to you, Sally, if that's okay.
Okay. Sure. That keeps sliding.
We'd be happy to hold on to it or if you wanted to take it, whatever the best way to do after we take the picture, whatever you'd like to do. Thanks, Natalie. Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We'll see you in a couple days.
We'll hold on. We'll bring it with us on Thursday. Thank you, thank you.
I have enough to hold on to.
And we'll bring it along on Thursday.
And I'd love to stay, but I need to get to work.
We understand.
Perfect.
You're Sally. Sally.
Don't forget your glasses.
No, you're okay.
That was one of the things I didn't say.
No worries.
In the middle of all this, I had to have eyes.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you for your perseverance.
Thank you, Sally. Okay. All right. So thankful that Sally was able to make it in. And we're going to turn our attention now to a conversation about our tentative and proposed 2022 budget. And with that, we'll turn it over to Margaret.
Okay, thank you very much. We are pleased to submit the proposed 2022 county budget for your review and consideration this morning. This proposal represents a comprehensive analysis of previous year and projected revenues and expenditures. Based on this review, the proposed budget allocates revenues to carry out the county's mission of providing the highest quality of services, programs, and supports to the citizens of Center County. As you well know, the proposed 2022 budget document was developed through a several-month-long, intensive, and collaborative review process involving all county departments and units. And perhaps the most noteworthy of highlights in this proposed budget is that for the 12th consecutive year, the county's general millage rate will remain the same. Corey Troutman, in a moment here, along with Ed Zach, will provide an overview of the major highlights of the proposed budget. And copies of the budget document are in front of you this morning. There are also copies available outside. In accordance with the county code, following a 20-day public review period, which also includes publication on our website, adoption of the 2022 budget will take place at the Tuesday, December 28, regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners. So at this time, I will turn it over to Corey for an in-depth review of our budget highlights.
Thank you, Margaret. And at this time, I just, while we get the slide up on the screen here, just would like to publicly thank you, Margaret, the staff, for all the effort that's gone into this budget process. Wouldn't have been possible to get to this point without everything that you've done. I'd like to thank the commissioners as well for their input in the process throughout all the work sessions. And it really is, it's a team effort to get this process done. It touches every single operation within the county. And without the input of the departments, the commissioners, and everybody involved, it wouldn't be possible to get to this today. So thank you, everyone, that was involved in the process. Thanks for working with us. It was a pleasure to get to this point. So without further ado, I will turn to the summary. As Margaret mentioned, the 2022 proposed county budget represents no increase in county real estate taxes for the 12th consecutive year. And that means that the county's total millage rate of 7.84 per mills will remain unchanged. That'll be 6.65 general mills and 1.19 for debt service. The budget represents a projected growth increase of assessed values of approximately 0.86% over 2021. What that translates into is a total operating budget of $106.4 million, of which the capital, including the capital budget of 1.4. That brings us to a total budget of all funds, including the capital, of $107.8 million. Now, some of you might say that's a large increase from the prior year, which it is. And the large increase is mainly due to special revenue funds. So the total of $106.4 million is approximately a 35.4% increase over the 2021 budget. Most, all of that is related to restricted funds that are received in the special revenue fund. So the second bullet there, there's a $27.4 million increase, which is more than double what the grant funding portion of our budget was last year. The big drivers of that, obviously, of the emergency rental assistance that'll be rolling through. We did have that in 2021, but not for the original budget. And also ARP. ARP is also a very large factor in that. Again, total ARP allocation is 31.5. This budget represents about half of that that we're anticipating coming in the second half of that increment. Okay. As with last year, there were areas that do potentially impact the pandemic, impacted by the pandemic. The list is not any different. You know, we could see some impacts of real estate taxes, hotel tax revenue, revenues for services, and also lower interest earnings. The good news that we have for that is for ARP, the American Rescue Plan, they enable us to continue to budget at a consistent, to budget a consistent level of providing government services and really take any of those risks that we'd normally have in that process and utilize revenue loss funds to cover those costs. So the budget reflects approximately $2.5 million of ARP funding to continue to provide county services at its existing level. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ed to talk a little bit about the...
Yes, on this particular slide, we would just present to the county that the county has been pretty consistent with the increase of assessed value throughout the years, other than the 2020, which kind of jumped a little bit based on the housing market. But other than that, it's been pretty consistent as far as growth. The next slide we wanted to present was the interest earnings. Obviously, there was a huge decrease from what was budgeted in 2019 to 2022 budget. Basically, obviously, the interest rates have really bottomed out since 2019. The next slide basically just shows what makes up the revenues in the county budget. Obviously, the grants and payment and lieu of taxes are the bulk of the revenues at 57%. The county real estate taxes cover 23%. The debt service is at pretty much 4.3%. And departmental earnings is at 12 million, about 12.3 million percent, or 12 million with a 12%. Again, Corey had mentioned the increase in revenues. Obviously, it will match up with the expenses. Again, a lot of this comes because of the special revenue funds of the ERAP and the ARPA currently in the 22 budget. We're budgeting $15.7 million of the ARPA funds. The next slide just basically saying that there was an increase in salaries for employees. Also, there was no increase of contribution for employees towards their insurance. And it covered about, between the salaries and benefits, there was an increase of about 6.4% over the 2021 budget.
So with that, the summary slide here basically shows all funds except for the capital. So this is general, special revenue, and other funds. And this is basically a summary slide of the total budget and by category. So, you know, it breaks out salaries, the employee benefits, by difference. Subtotal salaries and benefits is the 6.4% increase that Ed had mentioned. And just two things to note here on the variances. I would just note that you want to remember in 2021, there was no budgeted increase in salaries. So the salary adjustments that were made in 2021 are showing as a variance here as well as the salary increases going into 2022. The other thing from a salary standpoint that I just note here is that the ERAP funds required additional personnel costs. So that's also one of the things that's driving those salary increases. So it's pretty difficult to sort of show the compared, to actually give the story here without just describing the general fund. So the next, well, in a couple slides, I'll sort of just break down what that really means from the general fund compared to what it is, what's funded through the restricted funding streams. So the total budget would give us 11.74% fund reserves, which still falls within the GFOA's recommendation. And a note there is also that that includes, because there was an increase in expenditure, that percentage still is an increase over what was budgeted last year. So we're anticipating that the current budget will not cause us to use any fund balance because of the use of restricted available funds from grants. So this is what the total proposed budget looks like. This is also in the packet that's included for you to look at. But as you can see, human services is obviously the biggest, followed by some other allocations there. But that breaks down the total budget of $107.8 million. A couple things on the capital funds. This was about $1.4 million in the budget. That's going to include the completion of the courthouse renovations as well as facility upgrades and repairs. And then the last slide before we go through the timeline, this just breaks out what really the bottom line is. So when we talk about all the increases to funding and all the restricted revenues that offset them, this is really, from a general fund standpoint, where the increases come from. So the total general fund expenditure is increased by about 1.85 million to 4.7% over what they were last year. The biggest driver, that's the salary and benefits that we just talked about. That's about $1.2 million. And again, that's compared to budget. So that would include both the 2021 increases that have already been made in '21 plus what has been contemplated and discussed in work session going forward for 2022. Other than that, really, the three other departments that saw increases in the 2022 budget, the prothonitory, which is a systems upgrade that had been discussed that's put in there, that's pretty much $250,000. Elections is really increases in cost because of operating increases due to mail-in ballots, you know, advertisement, all those kind of things. That's pretty much the increase there. All generally things we've seen increases across the board at other counties, you know, post-pandemic. And the prison, the prison is mainly, I think $100,000 of that is medical, contracted services, mostly medical side of things, as well as food services costs are going up or cost of foods. So really, the takeaway is those are really the driving factors on the increases in the general fund. Everything else is really funded through the restricted revenue increases that we saw. So total, the budget balances, we're not using any unrestricted, undesignedated fund balance to do so. That being said, this is the remaining timeline. So there's a 20-day public comment period, which puts adoption on the agenda for December 28, Commissioners' meeting. So with that, I'll just turn it over if there's any comments or questions.
So, and if we wanted to, just before we, all of us make some comments, just talk through some of the salary increases that we're contemplating or considering?
Yes, I can do that. So the increase for the non-union employees not in 911 is equivalent to an increase of $1 per hour in pay. So that goes across the board to everyone. The increase for telecommunicators is a greater dollar-an-hour percentage with the other folks in 911 being part of that first group, the dollar-an-hour. The union workers will receive their contracted 4%, which is negotiated by their contract, and also a revision to their hourly rate in addition to that. And that is a variable rate based on the scale and the different ranges. So it's a little bit different depending on what group of employees you are in. But for most of our employees, it is the $1 per hour rate increase.
Thank you, Margaret. I think that was important just to highlight and mention because that is a big cost driver that's going to stay with us, not just in 2022, but in future years. But it's a recognition prior to the finalization of the salary compensation and classification study that we do need to increase salaries a little bit across the board. And we're especially cognizant that a percentage increase would not have as much of an impact on some of the employees that we have on the front lines who are making a little bit lower in the salary range. This will help to give them a very large percentage increase. We're very mindful that we need to increase some of those wages. But there potentially might be more wage increases once we finalize the Archer study. So I think that's important to mention as well that this is not the finalization of that study, but this is just a step in the direction we need to head. But I think broadly speaking, I think we're all going to echo
But I think broadly speaking, I think we're all going to echo this and say this, but, you know, we're still living in unprecedented times, and the budget is a reflection really of what we do here in county government. And as you can see, it is a unique budget. But I think what it does is it allows us to be very nimble and agile as we go into the new year, has a tremendous amount of different paths that we can take depending on that ARPA revenue, that we can offset some of our revenue decreases. We've seen some really historic revenue decreases over the last two years since the pandemic began, especially in our courts and corrections. And so we just want to be mindful that we may need to be backfilling that with some of our ARPA funds. But overall, I think it's a good budget. It really outlines our priorities for the coming year, and again, allows us to keep services going for folks here in Center County. So again, kudos to everybody involved with this. We've been seeing a lot of each other in budget meetings, but it's really been a lot of good work that's produced this document. And again, some fine tuning might occur over the next three weeks as we reach the 28th and the deadline for approval. But again, thank you to everybody involved. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, we have a historic 12th year of no county property tax increases. We have substantial increases in compensation for county employees, especially those toward the lower end of the wage scale. And that's for all county employees and for 911 dispatchers and unionized corrections officers, the increase will actually be higher than the dollar per hour. As was mentioned, our unrestricted fund balance, to translate that into normal citizen speak, our rainy day fund will stay the same. It's toward the upper end of the recommended range, but that's a good place to be. We also are utilizing the American Rescue Plan funds to help balance the budget. Normally, you would have, the county would deliver a dollar and 80 cents of services for every dollar of local property tax collected, thanks to state and federal grants. I think this year will be well over that, maybe as much as $2.50 of services for every dollar of local property tax. I'd also like to thank Margaret Gray and her team. This was a very long, drawn-out process. I think normally, we try to find about $2, $3, $4 million of cuts that we can make in the proposed budget. I think this year it was more like $5 or $6 million. Thanks to Corey and Ed. I know you work with a lot of other counties, but it's nice to get your perspective. So appreciate everything you've done. And yeah, just of course, the Controller's Office as well, Jason there in the front seat, for their assistance. And again, thanks to our 37 different department heads running 53 different departments throughout the county. Everybody worked hard to deliver this budget on time, balanced with no property tax increase at the county level.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I think I could just echo the other comments. Ed, Corey, thank you, Margaret. I actually had to write down a few more people. Julie, Lisa, Natalie, John, Jason, I mean, the list goes on and on of all the, you know, all the folks within our departments that made this happen. This was probably the most convoluted and unique budget that I've had the opportunity to experience. The whole, the whole lay of the land is different in county government these days. And we've had, we had to give and take so many different areas and still try to work within our means and stay within what I would consider, you know, being, you know, prudent financial boundaries. But moving forward, I think this is a sound budget. But boy, I'm going to tell you, if I would have ever thought there would have been a day where I would have seen $107 million in a county budget, that's, that's a game changer for us. And how we, how we manage this moving forward is going to be a challenge. And hopefully, when we get back to less, I guess, more precedent at times, if you will. I am just almost speechless about the amount of work that it took to put this project together. And I can't say enough for the team that made it happen. And as we move forward, and we do have all the American Rescue Plan dollars to spend and allocate, we've got some, we've got a lot of hard work ahead of us. And this is just the beginning. This is the down payment on, on a lot of tough planning ahead. So thank you for everybody who made this happen. So thank you.
We got to the place where during our budget meetings, we were saying, you know, in 10 years, when they look back, when the Board of Commissioners at that time looks back on what we're working on, how are they going to, you know, what are they, how are they...
They have to have some footnotes.
Absolutely. You know, and we sort of at the end of the day said, well, they're going to have to figure out a little bit. We can't be, you know, can't pause in our tracks and try to write a script for what they're going to be reading 10 years from now. But it is certainly going to be something that is unique. Thinking about two years ago, if somebody had told us you're going to get $60 million, $70 million in new money from the state or federal government, I think we all would have been thrilled. But I think with the circumstances in which we've received it, it has been challenging. So again, doing a, doing a budget in normal times is difficult, but doing a budget in, like you said, Commissioner, unprecedented times is even more challenging. But we still have this open for public inspection. We would love the public to look at our website. It's a 16-page executive summary that they'll be able to look at. They can provide comments either by calling us, emailing us, social media. But we really want to do this as a, you know, the budget for Center County. So please let us know your feedback. And any changes we're making over the next three weeks, we will be documenting and talking about at the December 28th meeting. So with that, any other comments or questions at this time? Any questions? Gary Haley.
The level's about the same, or did you have to make any cutbacks or layoffs?
No, we have not. We actually had some positions that we looked at adding to the budget. And so there's a potential that we're going to be looking at positions within our elections office to help assist with some of the new procedures that have been put in place. So there were no, and we may have, we did not fill some positions. So we budgeted for the position, but we know we're not going to fill them. So there will be some savings there. But yeah, staffing levels in terms of full-time employees is still very much where it was last year and this year. All right. At this time, we would look then for a motion to adopt tentative county budget.
Motion to adopt the 2022 tentative county budget and authorize advertisement for public inspection.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Margaret?
Thank you.
Corey, Ed, thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very much.
We'll welcome up Chad at this time.
Hello, I'd like to ask that the recommendation for the contract award for the IT Managed Service RFP be tabled until Thursday, December 9th.
Okay, all right, sounds good, Chad. Is there a motion then to do so?
Motion to table the contract award until Thursday, December 9th.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. The motion is carried. Thank you, Chad. Okay. Natalie, we'll welcome you up with an MOU with the Penn College of Tech.
Good morning. So I have before the board an MOU with Pennsylvania College of Technology, specifically their Human Services and Restorative Justice Program. What this is, is we had an individual reach out to us about an internship specifically within our intellectual disability department. And oftentimes, sometimes we can't always meet the classifications or the time or whatever it is for some of our interns. But this actually is an opportunity that we wanted to take advantage of. The person in particular wants to learn more about the policies and work and services that are available for families in Center County. And so the MOU outlines what our responsibility is toward the school and the professor, you know, and then the work that we will have the intern do, and then outlines their responsibilities for, I think it's 350 hours that they will be providing to us this spring semester.
Okay, thank you, though. Is this a paid internship or...
It's unpaid.
Great experience for somebody to see the inside workings of the human service business, which is almost invaluable if you, if you're headed down that career path.
Absolutely. We, especially with a strong interest in intellectual disability, we really feel with everything going on with the state level, we have some opportunity to really have that intern see how we support families here locally.
Wonderful. Happy to see it. Motion to add the MOU with the Pennsylvania College of Technology to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. The motion is carried.
Thank you.
Good morning, Ray.
Good morning, Commissioners. This morning, I'm here for the execution of documents required for the submission of the formal application to accept the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program, RACP funding for center volunteers in medicine, clinic construction in the amount of $1,500,000. Received an email from Teresa Sparcino this morning from Delta Development, and the CVIM was granted an additional $1 million. So that amount should be 2.5 million for their project at 2026 Sandy Drive Ferguson Township. That amends item 1 and 2, RDA Form 300 and 301. It keeps the total project cost of $4,704,300. But again, that grant amount will increase by 1 million for each of those forms. And then there's a Resolution 15 of 2021 to authorize the submission of CVIMs, RACP funding application, and further authorization of the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners to execute all documents and agreements between the county and Pennsylvania Office of Budget.
Congratulations.
To be clear, these, the numbers haven't changed? That we have the correct numbers here?
Total construction has not changed. The grant amount has changed by an additional million.
Okay, that's usually a 50-50 split in the RACP business. Doesn't require a 50%, you know, 50% match.
To my knowledge, as far as the forms that Teresa sent this morning, that number does not change.
Okay. The only thing...
That's a good question.
Yeah, the only reason I'm asking is because of the, of the new laws that we have to make sure that before we amend any of the, the agenda that we're consistent there.
I will confirm with that with her before next week.
Great. Really good that we can help them.
Yeah, this is, we had a productive meeting with them a few weeks ago, and it was beneficial to see the project and the outline they have. It's excellent that we can assist them in being the grantee for this. So this is great. So thank you for all your help with this, Ray, you and your team. And we look just for a motion.
Just before the motion. Thanks, Ray. Yeah, I was just there at their new facility an hour and a half ago getting my booster shot. And as an example, they currently, in the prior building, they had one small room for dental services, which there's huge demand for dental services in Center County. They now will have a room twice the size of this one, just devoted to their dental program.
That's my understanding is the funds will be used to retrofit the building that they'll be going into or they're in now.
Yep. Yep, they're in now, and they're doing the free, in fact, in some cases, no appointment, boosters and regular shots there. So it was great to see the facility that we're helping them retrofit. Motion to add the Pennsylvania Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program documents, 1 through 4, to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
And that is at the higher amount, at 2.5?
Oh, at the $2.5 million for the actual R cap funds.
And second is also...
Yes.
All right. Very exciting today. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, thank you again, Ray. And at this time, we are going to welcome up Missy Gallagher Long, and she's going to discuss some updates for our CDVG program. Good morning, Missy.
Good morning. So today I have a updated Section 3 action plan for your review. Section 3 is a federal program that requires certain HUD programs, which CDVG is one of them, to provide enhanced economic opportunities to Section 3 residents of the county. Section 3 resident is a resident that falls on the low or very low income limit range. HUD sets those income limits every year. HUD also sets a percentage goal that for each CDVG project, you have to show as the county that you follow your action plan to actively try to attempt to hire and provide those enhanced economic opportunities to the percentage goal of workers on the project. What's updated now is that the threshold has increased from $100,000 to $200,000. So any project, CDVG project that has $200,000 of funding now will trigger the Section 3 goals. Also, Section 3 focused on any new workers hired for the project, and now it is a totality of the workforce that includes your subcontractors. And that's it.
Would this affect any of the current projects we're doing or just new ones?
Just the new ones. They just passed the updated plan and are asking to be approved at the county level for the 2022 year.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we look for a motion.
Motion to add the Section 3 action plan to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. For a motion to approve this week's consent agenda.
Motion approved this week's consent agenda.
Seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, we have no administrators report today, okay? And we'll turn it to Commissioner Higgins for a check run.
Sure. Average check run, the amount of $1,436,790.56. The checks of the week are to Community Services Group Incorporated totaling $10,947.50. Six different checks for a broad variety of human services delivered between July and October. Would like to make a motion to approve the check run dated December 3rd.
Moved and seconded to approve the check run. Any final discussion on the check run? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. For a letter of support today, we have, we do have one, and this is to consider a letter of support for the Clearfield Educational Foundation Futures, application for a US EDA Good Jobs Challenge Grant. This would, to assist with economic development in the McShannon Valley. The way this came about was Chairman Sobel of the Clearfield County Board of Commissioners reached out to me. He's reaching out to all the commissioners from the surrounding counties regarding this. It's a project that they're doing specifically in the medical field. And we know that we have many residents in the McShannon Valley, and the thought would be that if they get this grape, it would really help the region as a whole. They've got more medical facilities out there in the, in the McShannon Valley, and so this would just be a benefit to them. So this would just be, again, supporting this grant. It doesn't preclude us from supporting other EDA Good Job Challenge Grants, but it would just at least, you know, show our partners in Clearfield that we're interested in what they're doing. So again, letter of support, just no money, just saying we support the project and hope it gets funded.
That sounds great, Mike. I spent most of the business day on Wednesday in Phillipsburg, so I'm pleased to make the motion if that's...
Sure, please, yeah, please.
Motion approved the letter of support for the Clearfield Educational Foundation.
Second. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. We do have a voter registration report.
Yes, we do. We have a total of 105,274 registered voters in Center County. The highlight reel includes 44,149 Democratic registrants, 146 Green Party, 679 Libertarian, 14,153 No affiliation, and 42,272 Republicans. When you add the 3,875 other parties, you get the total of 105,274. The feature party of the week is the Modern Wig Party. And the Modern Wigs have one member in Center County, so we want to recognize them. The precinct feature today is precinct number 46, which is Curtain South. And they vote at the Curtain Township Building. And the folks that make it happen at Curtain Township is Jane Lucas. She's the judge of elections. The minority inspector is Rila Fisher. The majority inspector is Ruth Miller. And the clerks are Erlene Lobsher and Beverly Walker. I don't have the results from the, from the latest, the elections office wasn't able to provide them for me early this morning, so, but I will have the percentages for the, for the general election starting next week, so.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Christian.
Thank you.
Seeing that we have no announcements, do we have any executive sessions?
To report today.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. We have the balance of our meeting schedule through December there. Any final questions, Gary or Haley?
So those of us who didn't do too well in econ classes, I'm trying to, the budget jumped from 81 to 106, 107. Generally, the COVID relief money that came into the county, is that too simplified or is that...
That's essentially what it is. Yes, it is. Again, totaling it up $60 million or so dollars. Again, we have until 2026 to spend some of that, but we have incorporated that some into our 2022 budget. Predominantly, it's that ERAP, ARPA, small business grants that really sold that jump. So that's, that's essentially what it is, yes.
Thank you.
Sure. There's always continuing ed classes as well, Gary, for econ. We can set you up with a...
They signed me up too, because this has been a challenge.
All right, we look for a motion then, adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 10:49.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.